Welcome, everybody. I wish there was a few more chairs, but I'm really glad to see those of you that are here. Tonight, we're going to walk you through what we hope is a plan for the future of our organizations for the support of our industry. I'm Charlie Christie, I'm Chair of the Beef Producers, but primarily, I am a beef producer from Easty here at Troschu. My wife and I run a bunch of cows in a small feedlot, and the industry's pretty important to us.
And I'm Ryan Gascow. I'm from Lethbridge. I'm the Chair of the Alberta Cattle Feeders Association. My family has a custom feedlot in the Lethbridge area, Irrigator Park. I just think we're touring around the province, talking about the agreement that Alberta Cattle Feeders and ADP have come together on. Yeah, looking forward to having a good discussion with you guys. Hopefully, we can be fairly informal, and you can ask questions during our presentation. I just wanted to have a good back-and-forth to discuss issues.
Can somebody tell me why we're having to shut down hauling cattle to pasture at a council meeting in early June for this? This is insane.
To have a meeting?
Yeah, people are trying to haul cattle to pasture. I had to shut down the Saksman company this morning.
Well, we appreciate it. We think we have an important topic to discuss, and it's a lot about the collaboration that we think we need to have in the provincial cattle organizations in Alberta, so that we can continue to promote, do research, and work with the government on a lot of the topics that are...
In the first week in June?
Well, Charlie, you know, we talked around dates. We wanted to get the information in front of producers as early as we could. There's no good time. I mean, first week in June, second week in June, this year, everything is so compressed. Our cows are usually out by now. I got, our guys are hauling cows right now, as we speak as well. That's right, and I appreciate that, that you took the time to come out, and it's pretty important, maybe even as important as getting your cows out. That one extra load that you may be shut down, I think this will probably mean more to you in 10 years than the Lethbridge cows tonight. But I really appreciate you coming out, and I understand the frustration. I drove around my yard today just to get grounded again, because this kind of stuff takes a lot of my time away from home. I get feeling kind of unhinged and out of control. So today, I was lucky enough to have a few hours to drive around and have a look at things, and I feel a little better about things. I'm really lucky that I have some good guys that have been with me for a long time. I have a daughter at home, and I understand the challenge. If I didn't have those guys, I wouldn't be here. And some really good neighbors that helped me out as well.
Yeah, but to respect your time, I think, well, if we want to jump in and not keep the meeting too long, and also, you know, there's a lot of people that aren't here, obviously, that are cattle producers in this area, so we're encouraging you to take the information that you hear tonight and pass it on, and we'll do our best to put the information out in other forums, and we'll also have some meetings in the fall to continue the discussion. But we think it's really important that people are informed about this topic.
Um, there's a sign-up sheet that the Legion has asked us to sign. If you could all sign it, we're faster, and I'll sign it quick.
I think probably the main thing that we want to make sure that people understand here is that we're talking about an agreement that's been made between the Alberta Beef Producers and the Alberta Cattle Feeders on collaboration. We think that by working together as major cattle organizations in Alberta, we can be much more effective and invest money in our industry with a higher rate of return. So, one thing that sometimes gets confused when we talk about checkoff is that we have a national checkoff and we have a provincial checkoff. And right now, the combined checkoff that we're paying is $4.50 per head. $2.50 gets sent to the National Checkoff Organization, and it has just been increased on, as of April 1st, to $2.50 per dollar. And there are some producers that have noticed that increase and have questions about that. That's not necessarily what we're talking about today, but we want to just kind of give you a little bit of insight on what happened there. But then, our main focus will be on the provincial checkoff. So Charlie, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, the $2.50 goes right through Alberta Beef Producers, right, well, it doesn't even go through Alberta Producers. It goes right to the National Checkoff Agency. The checkoff agency then nimmies it up to Canada Beef, which is the marketing and promotion arm. And that sum goes off to the Beef Cattle Research Council, which is obviously research and development, and then a small portion goes off to what's called Issues Management, which is stuff that's coming up on the internet and on social media and media in general. Misinformation about our industry and our production practices and our product. And it's just to inform people of the actual information, the factual, scientific-based information. You know, it's, there's been studies done that have showed a 14-to-1 return on checkoff dollars. That's a pretty darn good return on your investment. You know, we've been realizing that through projects like Canada Beef Center of Excellence. $200 million in new Canadian beef business. 6345 individuals educated on the Canadian beef brand within established markets that are already there. And I'm assuming a lot of that work is done through the Beef Center of Excellence in Calgary, and that's a commercial kitchen and commercial, actually, breakdown plant. So the part of the plant that takes the carcass and cuts it up and processes it. They do a little bit of research and development on new ways to cut, you know, second-cut meat, like the lower-grade meats. They bring in, you know, companies like, I'll say safely, I don't know for sure if it is safely, but for an example, Safeway Law was, or restaurants, chains, will send 20 to 30 people in to be educated on different things, and they can test things out in the front house in a full, like, household kitchen, domestic kitchen, as well as a full commercial kitchen. And it's a really, it's a really neat place to educate people about our product and what you can do with it, on the commercial end, on the actual product side. You know, Beef Cattle Research Council has demonstrated that 100 days of winter grazing reduces our carbon footprint by 18.27 kilograms. That's a lot of carbon, really. So, Research Council has also demonstrated a 1% improvement in feed efficiency equates to a 3% increase in rate of gain. These are all things that mean a lot to us as producers. That's where your return on investment comes from. That's a high number. That's where it's coming from. And the Issues Management has done an awful lot of work. It's been up and around in a very short time, and it's done a lot of media interviews. I don't even, I don't know that a lot of online memes, even. 8,000 people were reached by Spring Cattle and live stream video.
But yeah, I think one of the things that Issues Management is dealing with right now is concerns around the Canada Food Guide changes and making sure that we have influence on that, what's inserted into the food guide, so people realize that eating beef is part of a healthy diet, so. Anyways, I think that's maybe all we need to talk about with the checkoff. I think one thing I want to say, too, I think no one likes their taxes going up in a way that their taxes are going up when a checkoff increases. And when I was telling my dad about these meetings that we're having, he said, "Why are we raising the checkoff again? We don't, we don't need to pay more." And I reminded him that the last time the checkoff was increased nationally was in the 90s. And at that time, the calf was worth maybe $500, $600 a head. So, the value of everything has gone up, including the salaries that we have to pay people and travel costs and everything. So, for me, I think it's a good investment that we're going to spend an extra $1.50 per head nationally. But the decision has been made by our national organizations, and, pardon?
Should have mentioned the process that brought the, it was a national beef strategy over the last four or five years, and determined where we needed to be with checkoff in our industry to keep pace with the rest of the world. As we all know, we're an exporting nation, we throw a lot more beef than we can consume. We need to stay current, we need to stay competitive, and even get out in front in a lot of markets, and that's what this is designed to do. I should mention, too, my left arm over here reminded me of that this meeting's being recorded, we wanted to record one meeting, and you guys are the lucky movie stars, so.
Well, I would have been speaking a little bit more eloquently. Thanks, you told me.
I told you we shouldn't tell them.
Okay. Didn't dress up?
I think we did.
So, any questions on the national checkoff before we...
Has Ontario gotten on board yet? Or is it still holding up?
I can't, they're clawing their back, they're using it internally. I don't know, they're paying it, you know. There's some challenges across the country.
On Ontario, it's about 30%. They're paying it, they paid 30%.
There's other provinces that are using it internally.
100% is a challenge, but checkoff's a lot.
It is a lot unless you consider what percentage of that calf it is.
You sound like a government agent now.
I'm a producer.
Yeah, you sound like a government worker. Trying to justify an increase.
What do you think a fair increase would be? Like, a calf has gone from $500 to $1,500, so it's tripled.
I can remember when I sold cows for $20 bucks. You're not talking to anybody that's doing the law.
Yeah.
A big increase, we take it 150%. You know, to me, a little high. There's no worse than ADP, it's looking for another next increase.
Well, and let's say we're not asking for an increase today at ADP by 20.
We had one of these meetings yesterday, and a park producer telling us we were up to lunch at 4:50, we're there in a buck of hog, which, you know, per pound, or think about per sow. You know, that's $30 a year for a sow. But for, and they're eating our lunch in some export markets and stuff like that, and that's what this is designed to compete with. We've got to compete with the other proteins.
And for me, I think it's an investment. Like, if you're going to get a 14-to-1 return on your investments, let's put $10 in. You know, I think...
I'd have to look at that calculation and go, "Here's..."
Sure. Well, one of the ways they calculate the return on investment is how much money it gets leveraged against government funds. So, if producers put money into a checkoff, quite often, government will have matching funds, or even industry. So, let's say a pharmaceutical company or a beef company wants to do research on new technology, they would like to see some producer money, they'll put money in, the government puts money in. So you can kind of leverage that up. So, we might put in a dollar, but you can get another $5 or $6 from other organizations. So, it helps ramp up the value of your investments.
Is our present government promising to match anything right now?
Yes.
Or promises?
Yes.
Because they're getting themselves in a big mess.
Have they actually officially announced the cluster?
Yes.
Officially?
Officially.
I don't think officially.
I don't think they've gone to the party anymore.
Yeah, we can't say that, but it's...
You actually have a good point. Government money sometimes is precarious, and one of the reasons why we have, need to have an increase in the national checkoff is because some of the government money, like through the legacy fund, the money that the federal government committed after BSC disappeared over time. So who's going to step up and fund it? We can't always expect the government to fund our industry initiatives, so producers have to step up, too, and I think that's where it would.
And something to remember is government will not step up until we do. When we do, they usually step up at a level of 3:1, 4:1, 5:1, and we've seen it. When our producer contributions are very powerful communication to government, if the industry is behind it, it's politically friendly for them, they're all on it. And I can't stress, like, I spent, I don't know, six years on the Beef Cattle Research Council. That was key, is the leverage from government and the fact that as soon as the industry stood behind something, the government, that was a signal to them that, yep, this is important. So that in itself is a return, but that's the beginning of your return on your investment, and then it triggers more return every dollar that's invested.
You know, in the interest of time, we don't want to focus on the national checkoff, because, you know, I know we have other important things to do. We wanted to make it very clear, though, that what we're talking about with our agreement is not about the national checkoff, but we just want to say you understand that there hasn't been...
There's been some confusion between the two.
Yeah.
So we wanted to make sure people understood that the national checkoff flows right through to the National Checkoff, when you know Fanny stays back in Alberta.
When the auction markets buy to have an increase in their portion of the checkoff, which would come out of the federal or provincial?
Provincial.
So, and we can talk a little bit about that, too. So, I'll talk a little bit about the agreement and why it came about. And first off, I'll say that back in the early 2000s, I was a delegate for the Alberta Beef Producers, and I believe in what ADP was doing at the time, going through the whole BSC process and so on and so forth, but there's another organization, the Alberta Cattle Feeders Association, that was separate and focused on cattle feeder issues. I joined the Alberta Cattle Feeders six years ago, and I sat on the board. And in that time that I've been on the board, a lot of the discussion that we've had is about sharing the checkoff dollars. Because it became a refundable checkoff in 2008, and there wasn't a pubicider at the time, but the egg minister at the time made it a refundable checkoff. So, since that time, Alberta Beef Producers and Alberta Cattle Feeders have been going back before them, how do we fund our industry properly? And we spent a lot of time talking about this. In fact, almost every meeting I've been to, we've discussed this, and I would say probably the same thing at a lot of the Zoom meetings that I'm sure many of you have attended, was resolutions about the checkoff. And I think it's a very unproductive time that we spend talking about how we fight over these resources. So, a lot of us have had those feelings, and we're like, "We need to solve this issue." And the last few years, ADP and Alberta Cattle Feeders Association, we've really gotten together and said, "You know, we have a lot of things in common that we should be working on. How can we collaborate on the things that we agree on?" And this agreement came about. We thought that we should have some type of a mechanism to work together, and we created what we're calling the Alberta Beef Industry Development Fund. I like to think of it as something that would replace what was called ELMA within the Alberta government, and ELMA got axed a couple of years ago, but I thought it was a good system for funding investment in the cattle industry. Now, we need to fund these organizations, and we, after the checkoff became refundable, trying to do some simple math, about $6.5 million gets collected provincially from the checkoff, and about $2.5 million was getting taken out of the ADP coffers. Some of that money went into the Alberta Cattle Feeders, so our membership dollars increased because of that. But a lot of money just went into places that we, I mean, there was really no accountability for that kind of money. It went to producers' pockets, and that's fine. However, the problem with that is when people keep it in their own pockets and don't invest in the industry, we miss out on that leveraging that we were talking about. And, you know, unfortunately, there's a feeling amongst a lot of producers that, you know, "I'm putting money in, and a lot of people are not, and should I do it anymore?" And they're, in some cases, using that money as a stick to address certain issues, and we just didn't feel that was very productive. So, the Alberta Beef Producers, Cattle Feeders, said, "Let's have a new way of looking at this. We're going to collect $2. If we go back to a non-refundable checkoff, ADP would collect $2. 25 cents of that would go to the Alberta Cattle Feeders Organization. 40 cents would go to this Alberta Beef Industry Development Fund that we will work on projects together. A $1.30 would stay with ADP. And about 53 cents of that $1.30 goes to the Canadian Cattails Association, who, you know, their job is to do lobbying, and we all know how important the trade issues are today, especially with challenges to NAFTA, and they've developed the Canadian, the Cattails Young Leadership Program, and a lot of other important things that are funded through CCA. So, ADP would continue to fund CCA through their $1.30. And then we talked about the remitters, for their administrative time, they'd collect 5 cents. So that's how we would kind of split the money.
I guess you give the CCA more money, because they're already getting $4.50. No, no, see, that's the difference.
Yeah.
That's why we started with that.
We have the national checkoff.
National checkoff does not go to CCA.
Yeah, it's really confusing, you know, because it, we think of it, it's a national organization, but they've actually, in the last, how long has it changed, which we have the NCO instead of NCA? The money used to go to CCA to fund Canada Beef Export Federation and...
It was always a national checkoff.
And it was always separate?
Canada Beef Information Center, which was the domestic part, and then there was a separate organization called CBF, was the Canadian Beef Export Federation. That's where your $1 national checkoff used to go. A few years back, they now made it the two. Actually, VCRC came on as well.
Yeah, VCRC.
VCRC is a division of CCA. That's only to do with governments, nothing to do with funding. The only time they get funding there is if CCA decides that they've got a research proposal that's worth investing in. So sometimes, a research proposal will be funded so many percent by the government, so many percent by this province, so many percent by the national agency, like, do you know what I mean? Our funders, our researchers work very hard to scrounge, to find money everywhere, to get, some of these proposals are very expensive. So, we're getting kind of off-topic, but the national checkoff, the $2.50, only goes to the checkoff agency.
Yep. Promotion, research, and then the CCA, they're pretty much a lobbying organization. So we're paying people like John Maswell, who's our legal representative. He goes and sits on discussions on NAFTA and Trans-Pacific Partnership and those types of things. So, really crucial that we have good people in Ottawa doing that kind of work. So, anyways, we're, basically, I think maybe we can talk a little bit about this Alberta Beef Industry Development Fund, and that's the part in the middle that we're going to share some resources. We're going to have equal oversight on where that money gets spent, but like I said, it's, in my mind, I think of it as a little bit of a mini ELMA. What are our projects that are common to everyone in the cattle industry, think that we can get value out of? So, it would be marketing initiatives, it would be maybe issues around eggs, safety training, research into projects around, maybe the Western stock growers might apply for funding to do something like grazing, or development of new barley variety, those types of things. So, consumer education, trying to get into the curriculum in the province to teach kids about the value of eating beef, so that's kind of what we're thinking.
Ryan calls it a mini ELMA, and I think of it as that, but it's also, the only thing more powerful than producer dollars going to initiative is one voice and producer dollars. They've been fractured in the past, and we're still living, you know, there's a lot of producer groups out there. If you can get the two main ones saying the same thing to government and ponying up some dollars, that is incredibly powerful. And that's where this industry development fund, really, some benefits, I think.
I don't think we're giving the Western stock growers a fair shake here. I don't consider them to be a minor player.
Yeah, and, you know, we asked them to participate in this, and they felt it was kind of fundamentally against their...
They don't agree with it.
Their philosophy, yeah. So, I mean, we hope that they can have some involvement, but you can't force someone to participate in a program.
But it will never preclude them from applying to the fund. Do you want to talk about governance of the fund?
Yeah, a little around the governance of it. Alberta Beef Producers would be able to appoint three people to sit on that organization. Alberta Cattle Feeders would appoint three people. It wouldn't have to be board members. In fact, we're hoping that we can select the best qualified people to sit on that board. So, we may ask a packer, or retailer, or producer, Western stock growers, auction market, whoever we think could be the best fit for that organization to sit on that board. And then, the two organizations would select an independent chair to oversee it. And, you know, we're hoping that they don't have to meet that often, but they'll get proposals in, and they've got a certain budget. We want them to spend that money, and in the best interests of the whole consumer pyramid.
And that's not to say that it won't do some of the research work of ADP or ACFA, right? It's a fun to work toward for the industry, right? So, I'm sure we'll be tapping into it to do work as well.
Is the fund going to be totally dependent upon the vote going along with canceling the fundability of the checkoff dollars?
At this point, that's where the money would come from, yeah.
That's over that?
That's, that's, yes.
If that vote doesn't pass?
There's no extra...
Does the fund count?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, there's been discussion, like, could we do this without, if we didn't have a successful public site, could this happen? Could we have collaboration and develop a fund like this? Yes, we can. I think we can. However, it comes down to dollars.
Yeah, it does. How effective?
Yeah, right now, we have $2.5 million getting taken out of the industry.
ADP's already thought about raising the checkoff.
No, I haven't heard of it. Never. Never once have...
Been brought up at the regional meeting in the fall?
No, that was the, for the national checkoff.
If it was brought up, it was brought up by producers. I've heard producers say, not delegates or directors, but I've heard producers come to meetings and put forward motions to do exactly that. They've been defeated at this time, and we've never suggested, as an organization, to do that. Never, never once.
In fact, I think some people are thinking that if we go back to a non-refundable checkoff, there won't have to be an increase. We'll have enough money to do the programs that we want to do, and we hope that by collaborating, especially, you know, we had this friction between our organizations for many years. We're wanting to have a solid alliance when we talk to government, and go to them and say, "You know what? We've got something good going on here. Will you take money that you used to put into ELMA and put it into a fund like this and match our funds?" So, you know, I hope that that means that we don't have to increase our checkoff.
Well, Charlie, what was it that they said at the meeting, that without inflation, our checkoff dollar is only like, we've lost the power because of inflation?
Yeah, I can't remember the numbers count.
Inflation. Our dollar only does 75 cents with the work of what it used to do because of inflation.
I don't even think it's...
It wasn't even that high, but it, that's how much, if we don't increase, we're not getting as big a bang for our buck anymore because of inflation.
For sure. Yeah, everything's gone up, like, we want to have good people working for us, and we do right now, but you need to have stable funding to keep people engaged in their job, and, you know, if their budget is going like this every year, you may want to look for another job.
If the fundability keeps you accountable.
And how does that, how does that...
Yeah, if people don't like the way you're doing things, they pull their money.
That's right. And so, when you, when you take your money out of the industry, you don't show up at meetings, and you know...
The money out of ADP, they must not be happy with ADP.
Possibly. But how do they hold us accountable? Do they tell us what they didn't like about us?
You just need to talk to them.
Who are they?
ADP, I don't like, they don't hold your expectation.
So should they be calling these people and asking them why they didn't like it?
They probably do, but keep following up. The people are happy.
Yeah. You know, I liken it to paying minkie tax. I mean, if you weren't happy with what the federal government's doing right now, and you could ask for a refund, who'd be paying minkie tax today?
The government's got no accountability. They don't actually...
Democratic process isn't accountable.
But our democratic process in this, in this country is flawed.
But in our, you know how our democratic process in our organization works? Every two years, every delegate has to run for election. Every year, our executive has to be re-elected. So I might get a real short pick at this thing. So, you know, if you're not happy with what's going on, go to your full meeting, express your feelings, and the democratic process takes it from there. If your peers and your fellow producers in that room feel differently than you do, that's democracy. That's the accountability. So the majority feels that we're accountable, or feels that we're doing what they want to do. You know, that's, that's democracy, that's...
The majority is just disengaged, not showing up anymore.
And that happens. But you know what? And I was going to say, you guys have shown up here today to tell us what you think. That's part of the accountability process. I think it's great, but there's a lot of people that haven't shown up. And then there's some people that show up, and they say this exact same thing to us. It's not a new argument to us. We want to hold you accountable. There was a fellow at Brooks the other night who said, "I take all my money out of ADP. I'm not happy with what you're doing." And I said, "Well, what would you like him to do?" "Well, nothing you do is right." "I'm not on ADP, you guys." He, I said, "Well, when was the last time you came to a meeting?" "I don't need to go to meetings." "Well, then how do you, how are you holding us accountable? You're just weakening the organization."
So that it can't?
And it can't function.
Yeah, it's true.
You know, a successful organization has a long-term strategic plan for what they're going to do. And, you know, the Alberta Cattle Feeders, we just went through a strategic planning process this past year, and, you know, we need money to be able to hit that, but if we've got members that are saying, "You know what? I didn't like that one issue that you handled. I need to take my money out this year." And then the next guy does the same thing, and this guy's mad at this guy, you know, how do you, how do we have any accountability for the money that gets disappeared? You know, we can't respond effectively to that.
Need to ask people, buy the full room. Believe it or not, that's when they lose customers. We're the customer, and see what have we do wrong?
That's, that's, that's what the full meetings are for.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's our biggest challenge. You hit on our biggest challenge is getting people to come out and talk to us. I've responded to some letters, I've responded to people by phone, face-to-face in the last few days, at phone meetings, I've responded to them. Um, it's, it's just, it's accountability thing, I feel. If you want to have a long-term vision for our industry, you need to invest in your industry. And by investing in ABP, you're investing in your industry, you're investing in your peers, because we're all producers. Every delegate, every executive member is a producer. That's our, our life is this industry. If it fails, we fail. So I, I, I struggle with the argument that pulling money away from, um, what your neighbor's trying to do for you is accountability. Go talk to your neighbor, go talk to one of your delegates. You don't even have to go to the fall meeting. Phone us up, I mean, our information is quite literally easy to get. And I would welcome the phone call. I don't get, I get lots of phone calls from these guys because they're busy doing stuff. I don't get very many phone calls from disgruntled producers and I would welcome, I really would. Like, but I do get a couple and I'm happy to take them and I'm happy to talk to them. I would say a vast majority of them, when we hang up the phone, we're on a different playing field. They say, I get it. Some of them don't, some of them just click.
And it's complicated because, I mean, I don't think we even understand all of the different organizations and how it all works together. So it's easy to be misinformed if you don't go to the meetings. And then you just get, you're ticked off about something and you pull all your funding away. Like, maybe you misunderstood it a little bit. So it's great when people come to the meetings, you kind of get a little bit better sense of what's happening and, and then you can make a, a decision whether you can vote in favor of something or not. And if you really don't like it, we welcome people to join, join in and, and have a voice at the table. That's democracy, that's accountability.
It's disheartening to go to these meetings when over half of people in attendance are on board. How can you, how can you vote?
Would you rather them not be here?
Well, maybe they shouldn't vote. Maybe when they have, maybe when we want to have a vote, they should vote against us.
They're producers too.
Sure, they're producers too, but if the, if the room is stacked with people on the board, how are you going to get any feeling to vote?
I don't know how many meetings I've been where it's been a stacked meeting. We have, we have five zone delegates in our zone. That's as many as we can have and people outside the zone, six.
One cattle.
Yeah, cattle.
They never count the cattle.
Sorry. I was on cattle, but, you know, typically we have, you know, 30 to 70 people. We used to have 70 or 100. But our, truly our producers, there's less probably, so we're probably. This is a challenge we're facing. We're, we're, we're working really hard to engage because we need to know what direction. So the people that show up, and you know, for the most part, it's probably only half. Like, I know I don't vote at the meetings, especially when I'm sitting on the executive. I don't, and I don't think our zone director generally votes at meetings. We're taking the vote, we're delivering the information.
And like, I think the point I was trying to get to as well is the fact that if you have to be from that zone to vote. So if we only have six delegates at, at a match for the zone, we can't stack a meeting. Because there's only 60 that are eligible to vote in that meeting. So you're not going to phone your neighbors from other zones to come and, hey, let's hang up on zone five. You can't do that.
The other, the other thing I'd like to say, just from experience, and I've been at this, this is my 10th year. I took a year off in between there. I don't think I've seen, I think I could count on one hand the close ones. It's usually been an overwhelming majority. When you agree that overwhelming majority carries the day. So I am trying to speak to your concern. I'm not saying it's invalid, it's something to watch out for.
You have more at your meetings. We had 23 in Panokha a couple of years ago and 17 were people that had sat on the board.
Had or couldn't have?
Well, there were people I've recognized from board and board members. I don't know.
Those are the passionate people.
I would hope that when I'm done, I'm still coming to meetings and I'm still voting. Because I'm still, I hope I'm still a producer.
Panokha maybe is a terrible, like, it's the worst meeting in the zone for sure. Like, Brett and Camera was both waiting for.
It's true in lots of organizations, all right? Like, you go to, my kids are in school, like, how many parents show up on parent council or, you know, it's, it's the reality of our world. So we're doing our best to engage people. That's why we're having a meeting today. Let's give some, let's, this is something that we've just worked out in the last month or two. Let's get to people here as soon as we can. People are going to be busy over the summer, we can't connect with them as well. In the fall, we're going to have a lot more communication again. We want the will of the people to, to go forward. We think that we're making the best deal that we can right now. It's not perfect, for sure. But if we wait for something perfect, it'll never happen. We have some people that have said, you know what? You guys have gone way too far with this. There shouldn't be any money going to Alberta Cattle Feeders. And some people are saying, you guys haven't gone nearly far. You guys need to be one organization. ABP should get no money, cattle feeders should get no money, it should all go to this EBITF. Like, it's a balancing act and we want something that, I mean, it's a, a work in progress. Maybe I'll just talk about the, kind of the next steps, like, the plebiscite process. We've got Brett McKeon from, uh, Marketing Council, he can maybe comment. But I'll tell you a little bit of what I know about how this will go down. We're hoping that, uh, uh, the minister has said that he would like to have plebiscites if, if, uh, producers would like to change their refundability status. And, uh, so we have, as, as organizations, said, okay, let's, let's ask the minister for a plebiscite on this issue. Uh, Marketing Council will set up how that plebiscite is going to go down. But we believe over the summertime, they'll write up a, a question that will be on the plebiscite. We, I think they asked me to input into how that question will be written. We want it as simple as possible, possibly, uh, do you support going to a non-refundable checkoff? Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Uh, and there'll be fall meetings that ABP typically holds with its zones. We're hoping that producers can vote at those zone meetings. We hope that producers can vote through electronic means to keep it easy. Maybe they'll phone in and vote over the phone. We're not exactly sure how it's going to happen. But I don't, Brett, do you want to, do you have any other thoughts on this?
I think you summed it up. Right now, we received approval from the government to begin drafting the plebiscite regulations. So the plebiscite will be under a regulation. So we have two plebiscites going at the same time. Potato growers have asked for one, so have Alberta Beef. So we're going to be working over the summer months on drafting those plebiscite regulations. Luckily, we have the 1994 plebiscite regulation from, from a previous, uh, uh, elect-, or plebiscite and we have some from potato growers as well to, to help guide us a little bit. Things have changed, so obviously we have to update them and modernize them. So we'll spend the summer drafting those regs. Uh, we're still talking about whatever communications we can provide to, to folks out there. So we're still deciding on that. Uh, Marketing Council will be reviewing, uh, the policy, the policies behind those regulations, uh, in the next week or two. Uh, we'll start to take those to the minister, just double-check with the minister, make sure he's okay with those directions. We'll start drafting those regs. And of course, those regs need to be approved so the minister has, has, uh, the ability to approve them. Uh, we're hoping to take that plebiscite out to the regional meetings, take the votes there and look at, at other opportunities and options for producers to vote. So it might not just be attendance at the regional meetings, it could be a mail-in ballot and, and those types of, those types of things. So we're trying to maximize the, the ability for producers to be able to vote.
I think a mail-in ballot is safe, but electronic is too much opportunity for fraud.
Yeah, and their Marketing Council doesn't seem real to you, no, electronic?
No.
So the vote we have then by independent party, from the meeting?
No, the vote will be held by Marketing Council. Marketing Council. It's a good thing. It's independent vote.
So then if, uh, the, uh, plebiscite is unsuccessful, I guess we are at status quo. Um, and we're not sure what will happen there. But if it is successful, uh, I think Cabinet needs to approve.
Yeah, there's one more step in the process. So if the plebiscite's successful, uh, again, plebiscites are non-binding, right? It's a vote, it's a gauge of, of producers. You know, it'd be kind of odd if the government didn't accept the plebiscite. So what would happen next is your plan regulation, your bylaws would have to change. So that would have to go to Cabinet. So all this takes time, uh, to get on the Cabinet agenda and so on. It's not just one thing. So we're hoping to get on the Cabinet agenda soon after the plebiscite vote in the fall and, and try to get your plan regulation changed. Your plan regulation's an easy change, it's, you know, a few months to take.
So our goal would be to have it in effect for the, uh, beginning of 2019, but, uh, you know, once the plebiscite's done, it's.
It's done a lot of things.
Yeah. But, uh, and then, uh.
51%, 75%?
The question was, what do we call a pass? We haven't decided that yet. In the 1994, it was 50 plus one.
Guys can go through, like, if it's turned down and our checkoff dollars go up, I, nothing can, like, not a lot will change because people can then claw more money back. So if it goes up to 4 or 50 and we live in 2.6, 6 million right now, who says that we won't lose 4 million if it, if it becomes still refundable?
That's, that's a big concern.
So that, that's why, for me, that's why we're fighting for a non-refundable checkoff so that the actual dollars that we put in as producers go to work for ourselves by being leveraged in the right direction.
Well, I, you know, I just like, like, keep coming back to this old, old color, old saw, but it's something I'm very passionate about. The ABP is not a corporate entity in Calgary. I mean, technically it is, but it's operated by the guy sitting beside you or the guy sitting beside him. It's operated by producers that have taken time out of their business to make it better. And, and, and for me, our, our industry has to succeed or I'm not going to succeed. I'll be flipping somebody else's burgers. You know, like, it's, it's, yeah, I just, I really struggle with, uh, the vision of ABP being this corporate entity that's taken our money in. It's not. You're, when you invest, when your checkoff dollars go in, you're investing right back in yourself. You know, the bottom.
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking about, uh, what you said over there, about, um, customers, you find a way your customers are believing you. I kind of disagree with that because we're on the same team here. We're not, uh, ABP is not a customer-driven organization that finds customers to buy their product. We're all on the same team, we're playing the same game. We want to take a calf from the time it's born and put it on a shelf somewhere. We want to extract as much money all the way along as possible. When Packers make $150 a head profit, eventually at some point in time, we speed up their lines, do whatever they can to keep that. But at some point in time, we pass up feeders. Feeders being who we are, we just right away pay a lot more for calves and hope that we're going to make it out of the other end. And it all cycles down to the calf. So we've got the same calf, we're all on the same team, we're playing together. When you take your money out, you're taking your ball home and saying, I don't want to play this game because I don't like the rules. Come talk to me and beg me to come. I don't know if I like that strategy. So is that too far?
I think if you don't go and check for the people that are pulling money, why the poll, we, we see. That they're obviously not happy. And you can't address it, it's very, you know.
Okay, I'm just wondering, as a team, do we need to stop playing the game to go far out? You know what I mean? We, you know, we kind of do that. We give opportunities for people to come and talk to us. I don't know how much more we can do. We could, we could burn up a lot of your resources or whoever's paying checkoff doing exactly that. We've, we've, our board and our directors feel that it's way more important to put that money to work than it is to spend it chasing down, you know, that portion that is disgruntled somehow. That's what this plebiscite's about. That's a chance to speak up. That's what our fall meetings are about, is chances to speak up. If, if, if there was no opportunity for you to come and talk to us, I'd agree with you. But there's ample opportunity.
If you wanted, like, next year, you could be the chair if you got enough people to vote for you.
You could.
I've already tried.
I'm good.
You know, it's, it's.
I believe my money in there, but still, you know, the money that's being clawed back is an issue these days.
It is.
It is.
It's.
But not big enough issue to be the one who wants to claw it back.
No, I don't know if that's true. I think people want to know that, why they're clawing it back. But from my experience, when I talk to my friends, who are, a number of them are cattle feeders, like, you just want to do this. You take your money out of ABP and you're not putting it into cattle feeders, you're not a member of our organization. Why not? I can spend money better than you guys can. I mean, how does our industry benefit from that?
Where we put ourselves at risk for being on sale to the right guy, to the right bidder. If we have one producer that's, say, he pulls out $250,000 in checkoff, that's a pretty substantial amount. That puts us on sale and he can call every single one and ask, what have we done wrong? And he can say, well, if you didn't put your money to, if you, your, your issues towards this, then I would have left my checkoff in. We've put ourselves on sale. We've left ourselves to a standard where we're speaking for the boy, for every producer, not just one, not the one, not the highest bidder. Every producer gets a save.
And that happens, that's how.
That happens all the time at our.
I, I did chase that money. Chuck Papadia and I spent almost a year having coffee with those guys. And there is every reason under the sun and no consistency. And at the end of the time, in our agreement, or we both agreed after visiting many, many producers from as far north as you can get to as far south as you can get, that the money was better spent talking to the guys that left their money in. Because the reason for taking their checkoff was everywhere. There was no consistency at all to try to improve. And that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to know that. And we wanted to find out how we could improve. And it was, every producer had a different reason. Whether they took, and, and I talked to 4H kids here, I talked to 4HL here in Innisville that took one calf checkoff back and I wouldn't talk to them. Right?
That's because you wanted to keep her from down the road when she had 200.
She's as valuable as anybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Her, her voice counts.
Yeah, that's right.
And we talked to the guys that were taken six digits back and there was no rhyme or reason. Different reasons for different things. So, so we have done that and, and, and we gleaned that it was probably better to, to concentrate on moving the industry forward, our time was better spent on doing positive things rather than chasing things.
And what we didn't do was say, oh, you took your checkoff back, we're not talking to you. That's the last thing. The other, you know, we had a guy yesterday in Lefferton, had a phrase that I kind of like because I believe him. Reverse accountability. If, if everybody's forced to pay, the guys that don't want to pay, I hope that makes them show up. Piss them off and get them to come and tell us what. You know, and, and that's, it might be a tiny spin-off, we might get half a dozen people that way. But you know what? If we're all pulling together, it's, we pay the lowest checkoff. I think there's two or three other provinces that just pay the same checkoff as we do in the country. And I'm pretty sure we pay the lowest checkoff in, uh, in our competitors.
Now, now you're comparing that differently. Yeah, we might pay the lowest, but we also have the highest number of cattle.
That's right. So we got the most.
We're the best benefactor.
We've done the most work to do, we've got the highest number of cattle in the market. We can't even.
Here's, here's my question. You have 19,000 producers in this province and you need to let know about all of this, right? ABP wants to have this set up, cattle feeders wants this set up. So you're going to use my dollars now to, you know, let everybody know that this is what you want? So, so if I decide that I want to be non-refundable, you're going to use my dollars to say that we want it to be non-refundable? But if I want to be refundable, you're now going to use my dollars against.
Technically, yeah. We're not, we're not using, we don't feel like it's against you. Well, we feel like we're being transparent and getting the message.
No, but you are, you are against it. If I choose to be refundable, you're now taking my checkoff dollars.
Charlie's not. The industry, the cattle feeding, the cattle producing industry.
But you guys are the ones that have to put forth all the.
We're elected members elected by the people of Alberta.
Yes, but I don't know if you're elected by 19,000 of them.
Elected by the ones that show up. That's their fault. I'm sorry for their loss, but.
We've got to show us a vote. Including that there's 19,000 people and you have all these people that have to be reached in order for this to.
I get his point, they're using everybody's money to promote the outcome that you want from the post.
No, not the, not the outcome. I voted at a, at a fall meeting. This is the outcome I want.
No, but to promote.
So everyone, everyone at the fall meeting said, this is what we want to do. We gave them the job of promoting.
Yeah. And I'll say the same thing for the Alberta Cattle Feeders Association. Our board supports this. In February, we had our annual general meeting in Red Deer. Our membership supported this. So we're informing you of what the action is taking based on the. based on the direction that we got from our, our members.
That's, that's how the, that's how this whole thing works. We get direction from a fall meeting. Like I said, I, I was elected by the people at the fall meeting because that's how the process works.
I remember this being discussed from out of that province.
We had to come up with this concept.
So we didn't hit this.
But the, the, what they had asked for is a return to a non-refundable checkoff.
We, we had it in our...
And we're trying to figure out how do we do that.
And Leonard, you and I had conversations about this. So don't bother me, okay?
I don't remember discussing this, but it went around it.
It wasn't about this agreement, but it was about refundable.
I think we actually...
We did. We had a representative from Alberta Cattle Feeders at almost all of our producer meetings. And, uh, if not, we all presented the concept of this. We hadn't had it passed by our delegates at the AGM. And we also, um, then the Alberta Cattle Feeders passed it at their AGM. So now, that was the concept so that everybody was aware of where we're moving forward.
One thing that I did change from the fall meetings to now that is really important, uh, for some people, is that the twenty-five cents that is going to be Alberta Cattle Feeders, if you don't like that, you could direct it to the Alberta Beef Industry Development Fund. That's one of the changes that, because our, we actually didn't get support from our boards for this concept until we included that little provision. So that was one of the changes we made.
Sir, back to...
I guess one of the things that concerns me about our industry is, is, you know, if, if we don't fund it, who do we expect's gonna fund it? You know, we're billions of dollars that turn over in the industry a year, and we're worried about four dollars and fifty cents? Should probably be nine dollars and fifty cents and get the bus on the road.
I didn't say that.
I mean, we're going along with half a lot of tires and not getting anywhere because we're too cheap to pony up.
No, it's not. It's not. Nobody wants to pony up. What we're seeing is the model that this is being based on, we don't fully agree with.
That's fair. That's why we're here. That's right.
So for me, so for me, I, I'd like to actually see it that out of all that, if I want to, I wanna be able to put it all into the industry fund. Because to me, that's the most important thing. Because I wanna see the research done in order to see younger producers and I make it in this industry. Because right now, they can't cut their teeth. I can barely cut my teeth. So we have some major issues that we need to figure out and deal with. So I'd rather see all my money just go straight into the industry fund if I want it.
Lots of people have that feeling. And I think even our groups are saying, "Yeah, we think that that, this is the, the key selling point of our agreement." But we still have to operate. We still have offices. We've got people that work in them. How do you fund that?
Because we're at home working. We can't do this.
Well, Western Stockholders doesn't with, with how that would...
Do you know how many members they have?
Yeah.
And what their budget is?
Yeah.
What's their budget?
Yeah, they do a lot of that.
But how much is their budget?
Enough. Enough to get things done.
Thirty, fifty grand?
A little bit.
Yeah. I mean, this, we're in a totally different ballgame.
They also sit around for, what, a hundred and some years now, right? Yeah. So they've been pretty relevant, obviously. Otherwise, people would've pulled their money from them and walked away, yeah, right?
Well, and, you know, ABP's been around for fifty years. It was, it actually was developed in, with...
Yeah, yeah, it came out in the western side.
I think the first chair was a stockholder.
I think the uncomfortable thing is if we wanna build a shop, we take our cow herd. We hope we get the right number of steer calves. We sell them. And we don't plan ahead to spend that eighty or a hundred thousand dollars until we know that we have the animals to do it. It's really, really hard to decide you're gonna spend a certain amount of money and then expect somebody to come up with it. You have to plan ahead, and that's...
That's exactly what we're doing today.
Exactly what we're doing.
We are, we are coming to you saying we need to have stable funding.
Yeah, but we can't. We can't. With cattle, we can't. We don't know what our price and our death loss and stuff is gonna be, but you always will know per animal how much your money's gonna be. We can't do that.
So that we can hopefully stabilize your price and do something about maybe some of the death loss. That's what this whole thing does. It works on death loss. It works on stable pricing, stable market access. That's, that's where like the, the research and development can only go so far. Our industry faces so many challenges that it didn't face even ten years ago. Like, our, our governments, even our most right-wing political party, mainstream political party, has moved so far a lap. And the disconnect between agriculture and the people eating food is growing and growing and growing. That's gonna cost money to educate and to, just, just to get our message across and be able to do what we do.
It's just hard to stomach something that's a set value when our stuff is not.
You know, I, I'd like to see that fifteen-hundred-dollar calf, ten more in a year. And that's why I employ this non-refundable. Also, I look at other countries like Australia. They have much higher checkoff than we do. We're, we sell one decap, they sell ten. So we need to compete that. The same with the other proteins. You take chicken, uh, and, or poultry, I should say, and, and hogs. They can't get their money back, even though the government says they can. They could take it back, you know, so, or chickens. And we are losing market share to people like them. We need to invest in our industry. We need to keep, uh, opening new markets, innovative ways for healthcare or for educating the consumer. So, you know, this, like, you said, this four fifty, that's nothing. We use nothing. Two out of fifteen-hundred-dollar calf. And I don't see why we're, we're worried about two dollars on the money. When we pay a two fifty, two dollars, it really is nothing.
Yeah, I think one thing that we've discussed too about this Alberta Beef Industry Development Fund, and you're, to your point, people like this idea. And we said, you know, we're, we're getting comfortable working together with our organizations. Um, it's a, it's a process to, to gain that comfort and, and trust that we can invest more money into that. But possibly we'll find ways, maybe through, uh, the way we operate, maybe one day our offices move together. We work out of one office. We could save some administrative costs. Can we drive costs down in our two organizations and allow us to put more money into the middle to actually invest in, in the things that you're talking about? That is really our goal. And, and, you know, maybe in future, checkoff increases. Maybe we don't have to give any more money to the, the two organizations. Maybe all the increases could go to the middle. If we're getting, if we're delivering good value. We hope that people say, "Yeah, you know, let's put nine bucks in the center. You guys have really proven it." That's our goal.
My view is if we ever did increase checkoff, it would come from the grassroots. I doubt you will ever see it suggested from the top down. It would be something that comes from producers that say, "You know what? This is, this is paying off." It's, but, but I agree with Ryan. Any surplus that is generated by, by efficiencies working together, I'd say it would be funneled right into the beef industry development fund.
No, I still think you need to have it as an option for producers. If they wanna put their checkoff dollars into the industry fund, they need to be able to do that.
One of the things that the industry fund does not do is lobbying. And purposely, we're, we're keep, we're restricting it to research, marketing, consumer education, those types of things. But lobbying is still an important part of what our, our organizations do. I'd say particularly the cattle, because we, we do a lot of working with the provincial government. And you can imagine when you get NDP and government who don't really know that much about agriculture.
Oh, I'm a psychos. I, I, I know. I know it all. I know it. It's been a tires here.
Well, my, my point is we need to have money to continue our lobbying efforts. ABP still has to do that. And so you, you do need some money.
So you're saying though that you wouldn't have enough support in this province of people funding you without having a non-refundable checkoff?
Well, we've been drinking...
That's what you're saying, you know? If, if we decided that we wanted to put it into the beef industry fund, you're saying you wouldn't have enough dollars then from everybody pulling in, throwing in, you know, if they were gonna be a member and throw in, you know, our two hundred bucks a year. You wouldn't have enough money for that.
No, we're, we're not sure because it's not stable. It's not predictable.
It's the long-term efforts that we need to protect. So many things that have really moved our industry forward didn't take two years. It took five years, ten years. And it's super, you know what research costs? It's expensive. Research and even, you know, you have a government change, you start from scratch. Really build a relationship with an administrator takes three out of the four years it's in there. And then hopefully, I don't know, fourth year, you have to build a new one.
Oh, no, it's revolting.
Is that getting leaked?
Revolting door when you find a building relationship with somebody that moved to somewhere else.
And what if we're super successful in this fund? And everyone's like, "Take all my money and put it in there." What are we doing? You know, we, that, that's the...
That's a good call to that, isn't it?
Well, we still have to fund these other initiatives that are more lobbying.
Same, that your dollars can come in. And you can be supported by your producers and you're showing your accountability to them. I'd say we're doing our lobbying efforts, doing all these things, and people are funding it out.
Do you know what?
There's different paths to go down, right?
There, there are, yeah.
You're describing, we had a fellow the other day that said, "I want all the groups to come together. We're gonna have an overarching board. And we're gonna work together, one voice." He'd agree with what I said. Our, our common voice is so powerful. He described Alberta beef producers. You know, when Alberta beef producers was developed, it was developed by the industry organizations to represent the whole industry. I don't think a cattle feeder counts until BSE, right? That's when it was formed. So, for some reason, the framework, the, the... ABP itself fell out of favor with groups. And I, you know, that's the nature of our industry. So what we're trying to do is try to rebuild something like that, maybe a little looser couple to try and be more flexible to, to avoid that. Because what you're describing down the road is gonna be another Alberta beef producer, you know, called the Alberta Beef Industry Development Fund. But it's gonna be, somehow have to be governed by, you need some employees to do the work. You need expertise. And I just see that vision long-term. You know, so, so maybe what we're trying to do is, is, you know, do a little variant of that that can survive the, you know, have some flexibility to survive the discontent that somehow built up over the years.
Well, what happened was as soon as we got a refundable checkoff, every meeting after that was circled around making it non-refundable, and people got tired of hearing that.
That came from the producers. And those resolutions came from the fall.
Chris, do you have anything to comment?
Um, yeah, I guess, um, what I think we need to remember, and we're getting a little bit, we're focusing too much on the deal and what we're gonna do with a positive plebiscite. You know, um, the deal isn't gonna be perfect for everybody involved, and it is a work in progress. It's taken, it's, it's come a long ways for these two organizations to work together and collaborate. And it is gonna be worth in progress. We're gonna get in there. We're gonna find the things that need to be. But I think we need to focus on the, the idea of the plebiscite. It's gonna be yes or no. Do you believe that everybody in this province needs to support the industry that we all make a living from? Yes or no? That is the question that's about to come through. The, you can't hinge the, the answer of that question to the deal. You have to say, "Yes, I believe that we all need to support it." And we have to entrust through the democratic process that the people we put in place will do the best to make that deal work for the industry. So that's, that's, I think, where we're getting lost. We're focusing too much on the deal and not enough on the, on the actual plebiscite question. It has to be yes or no.
The other thing to remember is ABP's plan is every five years. A lot of reviews come up in two years. And we fully talked about reviewing this whole thing in two years. Give it a chance to, you know, kick the tires on and drive it around a little bit, see how it's working. Make some changes, make some, build some efficiencies that we're seeing, "Oh crap, we don't need this." We don't need that. We've got this. And it's working very well. Let's, let's build efficiencies, funnel more money into the development fund. And then five years after that, because like I said, things are long-term. You don't wanna be rebuilding the whole thing. But I mean, five years after that, you tweak it. Five years after that, you tweak it. My goal would be that it all comes back into one organization.
So here's a, here's a random question.
Sorry, can I, Martin had this.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, there's conversation about how it's all going to be, uh, development fund. You know, that's where I want all my dollars. But these commissions and boards were all originally set up with, uh, a board who was elected, they hired a staff to look after, you know, the particular commission's interests. And they were voted in by the people. If we don't have those, that kind of framework in place, I mean, we can't have twelve or nineteen thousand producers telling, um, our researchers what to do because nothing will happen. So I think it's important that, you know, we have a proper, a proper framework in place to, to lead, uh, successful, uh, successful organizations.
That's why. I'm not saying we shouldn't have somebody there guiding that, but if I want my dollars to go there...
Yeah, but we have to have stability for that, so.
Ask her if you have any comments.
Well, I was just wondering if you could comment on why and how it went to refundable or non-refundable? Sure.
Yeah, that's it. I think there is, there is, uh, certain producers who wanted to so-called make, make our industry organizations for cattle. That, that was maybe one of their arguments. I was, uh, personally, I'm a cattle feeder. There's a lot of cattle feeders that wanted that. I was not in favor myself. Because I think if you make taxes refundable, people will pay taxes. It's simple.
Pretty quickly in a third world country.
And I, and you know, frankly, I, there has been some good things that have come out of refundability though. And, uh, so I don't think it was a bad thing. Because I think all of the organizations had to take a, a hard look at what they were doing and say, "Are we efficient? Do we have too many board members? Are we paying too much for the administration or organization? The monies that we're investing, like, what, what's not giving us the return on investment that we wanted?" You know, I am not an expert on ABP affairs, but you guys must've had some tough decisions to make. And maybe that, you know, trimmed the fad and, and made us stronger. I think the other good thing that's come out of this is that there was this animosity before. And a lot of cattle feeders were surprised. "Oh, two and a half million bucks is getting taken out? It's more than we thought." We thought more would maybe get funneled to cattle feeder missions. That didn't. And so our organizations have actually come closer together now and, I mean...
And there's, there's accountability in that too, working closer together. There's, there's, um, transparencies. Not that there was ever a problem before, but there might've been perceived issues, right? So now we're working so closely together that it's, it's a different...
If you get two and a half million dollars this period, to me, that's not just a couple bucks out of everybody's pocket. That's a few big players that are pulling all their funds.
That does happen. There's some large corporations that...
So what would stop them then if this all, say, this all goes through? What if they pull up and leave and there doesn't two and a half million dollars anymore?
Uh, you shut down there.
If you decide that to stop these away from having a meeting, you're still gonna miss out on two and a half million dollars?
Yeah, but probably the, the two, two dollars added.
I don't think that's a real, like, to be honest with you. It doesn't seem all that realistic to me. Not over a two-dollar refundable, non-refundable checkoff.
Well, I don't know. That must've been in their minds. Well, I'm just saying it is impossible.
As cattle feeders were selling cattle for twenty-two-hundred dollars a head, if you can't pay the two dollars, if that's gonna be the crux for the, your business, uh, let someone else do it. Jake'll do it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say Jake. Jake and I, the cattle will still be on the feed.
I was just gonna say, uh, Western decided they couldn't do it anymore and they folded it out. And there's cattle in Western right now, so those cattle are paid in checkoff. Just not Western owning them. The cattle aren't gonna go away. You're not gonna kill all the cattle.
I haven't seen any cattle in the heart of Alberta.
No, that one's not sold yet. But as you say, all I can comment, I can with the real.
He went to the commission.
You like the phone?
Or investors.
Uh, how, how much of a percentage of producer turn up, you think, you need to miss marketing call for much?
That's gonna make us a great idea.
You know, I just, further to my discussion is that if you look at the percentage of people that show up for, talk more like our local values, actually, ten percent. You know, uh, provincial government, I, you know, forty percent or so. So I don't know. We're not gonna have a, if you look at it that way, we're not gonna have a high percentage of producers.
And you know, we don't have the budget that the provincial government does to advertise provincial election. You know, we, it's gonna be really challenging to get producers to get out and vote. But I think one thing that we really have to emphasize to you folks here is that, go talk to your neighbors about this. And, you know, however you vote, I think it's more important that we get word out to other people that, "Come and vote on this. Learn a little bit about it and come and vote."
It can't be done at the meetings. It has to be, the dairy industry has to be notified. People that don't go to beef producer meetings have to have the opportunity, whether it's a mail-out or...
Yeah, and there is all that.
I think, Brent, would it be fair to say there'll be three or four different ways to vote?
Three? Two?
Whatever those are.
My, my sense is at least two.
You know, I, I've seen, uh, you know, if they have mail-out ballot too, the percentage is still not there. It's still, most of the ballots go to...
But they did get it.
Or they just sort of show up and like, oh, they, you know, they... Most of the papers about the Biden party are in the polls.
Yeah, it's a challenge. Yeah, it's a challenge. Any other questions or comments or suggestions for us on how we can get people over? That's the biggest thing. We need to get people, and we need to get information from them about their vote. Yeah, please, you know, if you know some people in those areas that, that they can come to a meeting, that's great. I think we want to, like I said, respect your time. I think we've had a very good discussion and appreciate your call. ADP next week. It's open, isn't it? If you want to come talk to us afterwards, not everyone likes to be three thirty in the meeting. I'm going to rush to get out of here, so happy to see my comments. Thank you very much for attending. Thank you very much for taking the time. I do appreciate it. I know it's a bad time. It's a bad time for everyone.
Can I just say one more quick thing?
Great.
Just so everybody kind of is aware, where things focus in their head. It wasn't one or two people came up. Sorry. Yep. We had two different boards elected. We all came up with different ideas. There's probably, I don't know how many months we threw things back and forth. No, we can't make that work. No, we can't make that work. So this isn't just, here's an idea. Let's fly with it. This has been a couple of years of back and forth trying to appease the masses. Not going to appease 100% of the people. We're just hoping that at least 30% plus one are happy with it because that's the majority thing works. But it isn't just a couple of people throwing an idea around that this is, um, so it, it probably isn't the best idea possible. But it's the best idea possible that we could put together with the people that were elected in the different boards that represent the industry, that they could come up with, with the salary that we're paying of pretty close to zero.
It's like feeding a gal. They always go for the break even.
That being said, you know, my, my dollar a head into Alberta cattle feeders isn't the most expensive part of my fee in Alberta cattle feeders. It's the hours and the days that I spend away from my farm because that's where I typically make my money. So, um, you know, we're a voluntary organization. I paid a $2 commission and my dollar here plus all the volunteering. And so there's been a few of us that do that. And so I guess just be mindful, respectful of that because, you know, we're not doing, we're not out to destroy the industry. We're out to build. If you think that we're all on the same team and kind of think about it that way, it might just help you, you know, we're not attacking anybody. We want to be... We're all in the same canoe. Hopefully, we're going the same way, right? Sorry, it's not too much.
And it was a good idea because they're inherently unstable. I, I said yesterday, you know... It's amazing you have one word. Yeah, our biggest strength as an industry is we're all a bunch of independent starters and that's also our biggest weakness.
And stubborn, I'll be honest with you.
Stubborn. Good. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're doing well here.